Good morning, everybody. I'll call over to the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, August 26.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, if you'd all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then now for invocation, led by Pastor Drew Redding, and the Grace Community Fellowship in Ottawa.
All right, if you would, pray with me. Heavenly Father, we just, we come to you this morning acknowledging that we need you. We need you to, to guide and direct our paths. We pray that you would do that. We pray that you would be with the Franklin County Board of Commissioners, that you would help them to lead with integrity of heart and with skillful hands. We pray that in this season of confusion and COVID, that they would lead well. We all know people, some very personally, struggling with this pandemic. We pray that you would lay your hand upon this county, that you would offer protection, that you would offer compassion to us, that you would encourage us to use wisdom and discernment as we interact with others and as we engage with the community. We pray that you would help our leaders to establish policies and make decisions that would be for the betterment of our community. And we thank you for the work that they've already done and for the leading that you've already done this way. We pray that cases would continue to diminish and go away. Heavenly Father, we pray that in the midst of a world that oftentimes seems confusing, that you would help us to be still and remember that you are God, that you have all things under control. We pray that you would help us to exalt your name, not only in Franklin County, but throughout the whole world. Pray for this meeting this morning, that it'd go well, that there would be wisdom placed within our leaders, and that you would use their mouths to speak truth. We pray all these things in your Son's most holy name. Amen.
All right, thank you. We don't have any correspondence or organizational business listed. Derek, anything come up last minute you need to bring up?
No, sir.
All right. Janet, do we have any public comment today?
No, sir.
All right. Our consent agenda today is to consider approving the minutes from our August 19 meeting. Anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
Lieutenant Howard.
All right, Commissioner Howard. All right, perfect. Thanks, Roy.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our sole item of business today is to consider replacing our lowboy equipment hauling trailer. I believe David Lee's on the line to close in on some details.
As Commissioners, we have, we currently use a 1995 Oak King lowboy trailer that hauls our heaviest equipment, our track loader, dozer, those sorts of things. This piece of equipment has performed excellent over the last 25 years. But as you can imagine, we're starting to see some deterioration of the, of the frame and, and other components on the trailer. We've actually been patching this back together for several years now. And our concern is that we, if we don't either perform major upgrades to it or replace it, we could have a catastrophic failure while we're hauling equipment. We don't want that to happen. And so staff believes that it's time to look at replacing that trailer. And we would like to bid out a new 50, 50-plus-ton lowboy trailer. We have, we have planned for this purchase in our equipment replacement plan, and the funds are available in our Rodden Bridge Special Equipment Fund. Be happy to try to answer any other questions.
This is Commissioner Howard.
Go ahead.
David, is there anything we can do with the old trailer? It's probably not, selling is probably not an option.
Well, what we intend to do is, is auction it off through Purple Wave, and then at that point, we, we sell it as is, and so the liability goes away for us. We, we kind of feel like this would be an ideal piece of equipment for possibly a farmer that is just traveling from field to field and, and not over the highway, like we do quite frequently with it.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, I think the pictures make your case pretty well that it's kind of had towards the end of its life. So, any other questions for David? Anyone like to make the motion to approve soliciting bids to replace this piece of equipment?
This is Don.
All right. Yeah, I think Don made the motion and, and Rick seconded it.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, now the staff reports. Let's start off with Derek.
All right, thanks, Colt. So Janet and I continue to work on this spark funding process. As you know, we submitted our direct aid spending plan to the state. That would have been last Monday. Before we can do anything, we really need the state to approve that plan. The reason for that is, I mean, counties are on the hook for all of those funds. And so if we were to go ahead now and start working with the sub recipients, such as the cities and school districts, and, and were to allow them to spend those funds on something that the state didn't ultimately approve of, then the county would be responsible for paying that money back. So we are waiting on the state currently. We found out on a conference call last week that it's their goal to have all of these plans approved by September 15. Certainly, we were hoping for a, a much quicker process, and, and maybe it will be. That is just the last day that they've given, but that takes an already cramped timeline and, and just further exacerbates the issue. These funds have to be spent by the end of the year, and if we're not, you know, making them available until middle of September, it's just, it's, it's been difficult and frustrating. But as I've said, week after week, none of us, and, and that's local government, say in the state government, none of us had a template for this. And so I don't doubt that they're doing the best that they can up there. But we're, we're currently waiting on that approval. We did have a meeting, a telemeeting with our consultant yesterday, and we're working on the process for allocating, or the funds have been allocated. But once it's approved, we're working on the process for basically distributing those funds and approving of those projects. And so the hope is that once the plan gets approved, we will have a process in place, and we can immediately just have the ball rolling and go from there. One of you reached out to me about the potential of setting up an office in the executive session room, just a spot for commissioners to, you know, and with COVID, there's, I know you're involved in so many telemeetings, and it would give you just kind of a, a private spot to, you know, even post-COVID, to meet with your constituents if need be. I've talked with Dustin in IT about what it would take to put a, a computer in there and a printer, and, and, and the answer is, we could do that very easily. I, I told the commissioner I spoke with that I wanted to have the discussion with all of you and make sure that none of you have issues with that. But effectively, from a, a financial perspective, it wouldn't take much. We'll probably just put a docking station in there so that you could take your laptops in, and then the cost would really be the printer. I mean, we have the table and chairs and file cabinets and basically everything else you would need. Do any of you have an issue with us doing that?
This is Commissioner Dunn. As long as I've been on the commission, I, I never had, had a, a need for a special office platform for myself. So it's okay if, well, the commissioner wants, wants to have it, but I, I never had the need for something like that.
This is Commissioner Howard. I, I don't have that long left, but I don't see myself using it and needing it, but whatever.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, what are your thoughts?
Well, I guess I was the one. And it was discussed earlier that we'd do something in the new remodel of the administration office and put a computer and, and something in there in one of the conference rooms for the commissioners to use. And I thought it over to myself. I'd say it'd be a lot cheaper, and, and, and we don't need to be in there in the administration office, that if we just had a, and I know, I'm the solid weight authority and the State Water Office Authority, those are all done by Zoom now and, and digital Zoom, which I don't have that capability here. And, and I thought it'd be a lot cheaper and a lot simpler if we just had a little spot in there, to where we even had a copier, we could print some stuff off the county, stuff that we need or have, and it'd give us a spot to meet with somebody if we need to, other than going to McDonald's, which can't even do that anymore. With the COVID, you can't even do that. So we, I just thought it'd be very minimal charge. We already have file cabinets in there. And if nobody ever used it, so what? Nobody ever used it. But it'd still be available to us if we need to. Like I said, all it would mean was just putting a jack in there and a, and a little printer, and, and that's it. But that, and instead of us moving into the new administration office, where I wouldn't want to go in there and be in there with somebody and, and administration needs a conference room or something. This would be something that's already private. It's something we already use for our executive sessions. So that's why I brought it up. I thought it'd be a lot better than moving over there into the administration office with a little office.
Makes sense, Don. And I can see how, especially for the commissioners, if you were out from one of the corners of the county and came into town and needed to reference something or print something off, you forgot it at home, this would be handy for you too. So, Ian, you have any thoughts?
I, I have one question because usually that room is locked, and unless we have keys for it, it kind of doesn't, the, the whole commissioner meeting room is locked, right, usually, when we're not using it? So, I mean, I think, I think the idea is great because I, I, my laptop is the only place I can get my email for the county. And we don't know if we would use it till we had it, but I don't know if we'd have access to it.
Can I step in there?
Go for it. Yeah, go for it, Don.
I use that room, did use that room, and I will when we go back to COVID-19. And all I have to do is talk to my HR office, and they'll hand you the key, and they'll just write your name down that you're down there, and bring the key back when you're done.
Sure, we could probably get a copy of keys for, for folks too, if we needed. So, all right, well, Derek, I don't hear anybody against it. Did somebody else have something to say? I'm sorry.
Well, no, I, Colt, this is Derek. I was about to just chime in and say, you know, access won't be a problem. We can, we can make that look however the five of you would want to. If you want your own keys, we can absolutely do that. That, that's no issue. And I, I, I support this just simply because it is so easy for us to do. And, and maybe it doesn't get used by some of you, but, you know, I, Don has convinced me he's gonna use it, and, and that's, that's great. Originally, we had a spare office designed into that remodel, and the purpose of that was for the commissioners. But due to space constraints, we had to remove it because the, our main conference room, just it, it wasn't as big, like the, the, we wanted a room big enough to hold department head meetings in the remodel. And, and with that office, we just couldn't get the conference room big enough. And so we took it out, and then the alternative was, well, as Don said, we'll let you use one of our smaller conference rooms, because we're gonna have three conference rooms, and they'll all have computers in there. And then, as he said, his thought was, well, what if we use the executive session room? It's out of the way. You know, of course, we don't have an issue with you using the administration suite. You're more than welcome to. And I, I know we'll like to see all of you in there. Having said that, if, if you want more privacy, there's, it's just a simple thing to do to set that room up. So as, as you, I think, were saying, Colt, it doesn't sound like there are any objections to it. So I will just have Dustin go ahead, and, and we'll start moving forward to get it outfitted.
So. All righty.
I, I will keep moving on. I, I will ask that Janet talk a little bit about this during her staff report, but I, I wanted to touch base on the 2020 census. I, it's something that I think as the county, we should be promoting. So I wanted to take a little bit of time during this meeting to do that. I know that so much funding gets attached to those numbers, and so, and I know our deadline is approaching. So want to encourage people to respond to that because that's gonna help all of us. And, and then finally, I want to end with COVID, and, and I'll turn it over to Nick here soon. But I, I do want to state that the county as an organization, and I'm not gonna get into specifics for HIPAA reasons, but we are dealing with an outbreak that has affected a couple of our departments. Obviously, the health and safety of our employees is absolutely our top priority. And so we are listening to the advice from Dr. Ransom in the Health Department, and we're gonna do exactly what they ask us to do. That being said, there will be disruptions in service. We are set up to continue operating in those departments on some level, but there's, you know, there's no way we can continue to do it at 100%. And so I do just want to state that, you know, there, there will be some disruptions for a little bit. With that, I am prepared to turn it over to you, Nick, if you want to piggyback on that.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Derek said we're working through some things, working real hard to kind of keep disruptions from happening, but we're gonna do a thorough job to make sure that we take care of our people. With that, as of this morning, we are up to a total of 251 positives. We kind of saw a lower increase in positives over this week, but we, we continue to work through testing, I, testing. We continue to work with schools. I know some of our schools have been open, some of them first days today, and then we got the, the Ottawa High School, and schools opening after Labor Day. So a lot of my staff time has been spent with them preparing, talking about what it's gonna look like for guests at the, at the ballgames, and what it's gonna look like if they have a positive, how that test is gonna go. So we spent a lot of time doing that. We continue to work every day with, with our nursing facilities, work with the hospital, and we keep that going. As far as staffing, I have hired my last COVID staff, so we, we are gonna, by the first part of, of September, will be completely staffed to handle all of our contact tracing and everything from COVID-funded staff. So that's, that's a bonus for us. With that, I really don't have a whole lot more to report. I will tell you, and every time I get excited about this, I feel like the carpet gets yanked out from under me, but we were a, a week away from receiving our rapid testing supplies, and those supplies got reallocated to the state to utilize in nursing facilities. So we walked back into the playing field, and, and there are a lot of rapid testing options out there. The thing we're working real hard to do is come up with rapid testing that has good accuracy. Any rapid test really is, is accurate on positive. If it detects the virus is positive. Where you run into problems is how accurate it is on negative testing. The one we were looking at only had a 15% margin of error on false negatives, which is one of the top in the market. And it also didn't require a special machine to run it. It's something we could do without a machine. So now we're back to the drawing board on that. I, I wanted you guys to be aware that that, that had happened. Other than that, I'm prepared to answer any questions that you guys might have. Can I do one more thing out? I do want to just take a minute and, and explain. One of the things that health departments have been struggling with is we get our information from the state. It's on a system called EPI-Tracks. There has been a, a large, I don't know if that word, but there's been problems with EPI-Tracks getting some reporting done because with a lot of these rapid testing places, these places that aren't reporting accurately to the state, some of the positives that are getting turned in, maybe getting turned in with inaccurate information. So I know the state's working real hard, but I'm gonna work with Casey today, but there is, sometimes you will see some changes in our negatives. And it's strictly due to the amount of time or when people report into this, to this system and how that, that affects our overall numbers. So we're working hard to get 100% accurate that we, numbers that we have, but we are limited to a system that gets reported into by multiple different places. And their timeliness of reporting that is, is what causes our issues. So I just wanted to pass that on in case you get asked any questions.
That's good to know. Thanks, Nick. All right. Unless anybody speaks up and asks questions for Nick, let's go on to Sheriff Richards. Are you on there? Jeff? I don't think Jeff made it. David Lee?
Yes, Commissioners. I don't have a long report today, but I do want to let you know, update you on a couple of items. Yesterday, we had the bid opening for the asphalt project. Those bids, we only had two bidders, but I'm very happy with the low bid, which was by a local company. And they were considerably under the budget that I had established for that project. So excited about that and excited to get, get started with that project. Somewhat related, last week, we met with Southern Star and Minnesota Limited. Minnesota Limited is the contractor for the Southern Star Pipeline Project. And we met over on Nebraska South of K-68, where we have had, we've had a couple of spots across the county where our asphalt has really deteriorated due to the amount of truck traffic associated with that project. And Minnesota Limited has agreed to have a asphalt contractor come in and repair that asphalt at no cost to us. So I'm really excited about that, and, and that's a good deal for the county and our citizens. Both of those entities have been good partners with us throughout this project, and this is just another indication that they, they want to do things right. The Colorado Bridge Concrete Overlay, that has been completed. I was out there last week. It looks great. I think it's gonna serve us very well. We need to let it cure just a little bit longer and work on the approaches, but with any luck at all, we'll be able to open that bridge towards the end of next week. And then the Haskell Road Low Water Crossing, we were able to pour the deck on that Monday, and they were gonna build the head wall and then let it cure a little bit, and that will be, we'll be opening that road as well. So that's just a brief update, but some good items there.
All right. Sorry, I was gonna ask you a question, and it escapes me. Any other questions for David?
This, this Commissioner Dunn, David, are, are you looking at Marshall Road also where the, that pipeline work was done as far as repairing it?
Yeah, anywhere that, that they have damaged the road significantly, there will be repairs made. Okay.
Gonna say, is it, oh, go ahead, Ian.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I was wondering, I had, had some concern about some of the repairs that we did on roads with the, the large gravel, that people were actually getting stuck in there. Did we do anything with that?
Where, where is this?
I think on Nebraska.
Um, when I was out there.
Okay.
The, on Nebraska South of K-68, is that what you're talking about?
I'm, I, I'll have to look it up. I think I sent you an email and pictures, but maybe you didn't get it.
Yeah, I, I don't recall that.
Okay, we'll do, I'll, I'll call you.
Okay.
I was just gonna say that it's nice, I drive a lot of the paved secondary roads to, if you hit a bump or something, to be able to see those white marks and know that it's gonna be getting better. Of course, those white marks indicate where a patch is gonna be. One thing, I, I don't have the list of repairs in front of me. On Lebette Road at Eisenhower, there's always been a, oh, if you're coming from the west on Lebette, a real shelf where it kind of falls off going from asphalt to concrete. Is that one that we're planning on milling down and kind of maybe giving it a little bit of softer transition from the asphalt to the concrete intersection?
I'm not sure that we specifically identified that, but certainly with the way the bids came in, we have, we have some, some room to add a little bit of work. And with the work that Minnesota Limited is gonna do, we had already included those areas in our bid documents. So we have some asphalt ton. So we have, um, uh, some asphalt tonnage that we'll be able to, to, um, spread in other locations.
All right, well, it might be a, it's not actually a failure, uh, but it, uh, definitely, uh, and of course, heat affects that. Um, I'm sure it moves seasonally, but it's pretty rough. It's always been there and I think it may be something that if we were able to address, a lot of folks would appreciate, so.
I, I know that, uh, that section of Lebette Road has a number of locations that are included in the bid documents. There will be improvements on that stretch.
All right, well.
Commissioner Dickinson, one more time. Um, when is the timeframe on that, those repairs?
Um, I'm guessing that it's gonna be, uh, mid to late September into October.
Well, thank you, David. And, uh, if there's no other questions, we'll move down the list to Janet.
Thank you, Chair Weymeyer. Uh, I did talk with Jeff Richards and he said that he had no report, so he didn't join the call as a participant today just is on YouTube watching. Um, as Derek said, we just continue to work on, um, getting a plan together to disperse the, um, spark funds that we're waiting on the state for. So I'm gonna be getting on a conference call tomorrow to, um, work with our consultant on that and, and how that looks. Um, and then the other thing is the census. So currently, the state is 87.3% complete, um, and the national, uh, reporting rate is 77.4. So we are ahead of the, the national numbers significantly, but we still need to finish strong and, um, really push for everyone to report as census workers are coming around to people's houses. When you receive a card at your house, when you're not home and they've shown, showed up there, please, um, get on and, and report. Um, those of us that are on the census committee are putting out signs. So I'm sure you've seen them out around the community. They're at the Annex Building, at the Courthouse, down at City Hall and, and lots of parks. The yellow sign that says Census 2020. So it's just really important to stress that that money, that, that count actually gains us money both locally, um, on a state level, and it also affects our federal representation. So we really need to push to get everyone counted. So, um, just wanted to reiterate that and that's all I have.
Janet, I have a census question. Uh, this is Commissioner Dickinson. Um, so I know one of the districts that we're low on is where OU is. And generally, we would have counted OU, but on April 1st, when the numbers were supposed to be counted, we had already sent all those students home. So do we not get to count, uh, OU? Are we gonna lose all those?
I'll definitely reach out to our census representative and ask him that question. I really don't know the answer to that. Um, I, I mean, I definitely have, you know, a, um, interest in that, knowing that also, not just for us, but, you know, I have a daughter that's in college and, you know, when, when you fill out the census and it says who's living in your house on April 1st, she should not have been living in our house, but she was. So, um, I do have a question about that, but we did have to indicate on our census that she is a full-time college student. So I don't know if they reallocate those.
That would be really huge if we lose all of those students. You know, that's, that's a big part of our count.
I will, I will check with Steve, who is our census rep on that and see what he says.
All right, let's go to Commissioner Comments and Board Reports. Uh, Commissioner Howard?
I don't have anything to say.
You bet. Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah, I, I've been going to Wellesville City Meeting tonight, but, uh, I got one thing here. Uh, being on the Tallis Lake Authority, uh, the management team, I mean, I help with the grants and so forth. And we did get a deal from Jeff Walker from the state, KDAT, and said that, uh, there'd be some grants available. Uh, Shay, our new director, has been working on this and we've even approved her to go to, she hadn't been able to go to face-to-face grant training. She's had to be doing some webinars and, and so forth, but she has been going to them, uh, on her webinar, uh, training. And, uh, there are some funding this year to HAW, some grant funds. And, uh, she's sent out, uh, information to, uh, all the, uh, Tallis Lake in, in the Lake Region. And it said to anyone having HH equipment needs, upgrades, or ideas for improvement that we could submit towards grant funding, I'd be willing to help brainstorm and do the research for any one of the counties. So, uh, I think I have to do, I believe it's September the 30th, yeah. September the 30th, you have to have that in. So if anybody thinks of anything, get with, uh, David or Peggy and, and myself. And, uh, I know we'll be looking at it on our part to represent the county, but, but hopefully there'll be a few, it's been long coming. We ain't had any grant funding for a long time. So maybe this is our opportunity to get a few, uh, to help out. So that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Don. Ian?
Hi, I listen to the City of Ottawa regular meeting and the study sessions. They're refinancing some debt that goes through Park City Park. They had some temporary notes, um, that they're, uh, changing to bonds. Um, they approved several neighborhood revitalization properties and that's cool that we are still moving forward in that direction. People are really using that, um, to help build new houses and to re, uh, rehab houses that need to be rehabbed. Um, they're making some changes in their utility department. And then I think one of the things, I'm not sure if this is the school or the city that's doing this, they're gonna try and use some of that spark funding to expand, um, high-speed internet to the entire Ottawa School District for those kids that are going to be doing some remote learning. I was on the radio last week, which was kinda cool that it was me, um, on the anniversary of the 100th anniversary of Women's Suffragette. Um, I did get down and I hope nobody listened to me last week because I realized afterwards that I was wrong on the date, that the ladies in their historic garb were not down there on Wednesday. They were down there on Tuesday. But I did get a chance to go through that display and, and it is very interesting. If you just walk through and look at the names, there's so many of those names that are, I mean, you can, they're names of people that live in Ottawa now. I mean, the ancestors, the last names. And, I mean, and names that you, uh, would know, Mrs. Simple and George Washburn. And that was the era. And Kansas was truly on the, uh, I mean, you, you think that when I go to and vote, I'm gonna really appreciate it so much more because it was not, it was a long time coming. Um, the ladies worked on this for years and years trying to, and when they thought they were gonna get it, then the Civil War happened and everything got shoved away again. So, um, the fact that the ladies can vote and, and be an important part of that. Um, and then just the census, you know, if you don't want a stranger coming to your house, just get online. It takes less than 10 minutes to do that. Um, and it is important that we get everybody counted because there's so much that depends on the, those numbers. We, you know, money for childcare and schools and, and healthcare and transportation and all of those things that all depends on our census numbers. So very important. I know if we weren't in the middle of COVID, we would have been pushing the census all year. Um, but now we're kinda down to the crunch time. We only have till the end of September. So get those, um, census numbers in, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, uh, just speaking of the census, I ran into a census worker out here in the country. And, uh, I think I've been questioned three times now as far as, uh, who's been in my house. And, uh, this lady has credentials on her car that she's going around everybody. Uh, she, she gets a district, uh, every day that she's going to every house in the county, uh, uh, check on, uh, who was there, you know, April 1st. So, uh, there's quite a push right now around the, outside of the city of Ottawa to catch everybody out here in the country, uh, um, in the census, whether they already send in their, uh, numbers by mail. Uh, she's double checking every, every location. So we got people canvassing out here in the counties. Other than that, I was at a Zoom meeting with ECAN last night. Uh, we had, um, good report from our auditors. Everything's, uh, in, in good shape as far as our audit. Uh, one of the things that ECAN has a problem with is, uh, placing people in affordable housing. Uh, no matter what, uh, where you're at in the footprint of ECAN, there's a difficulty finding affordable housing for, uh, low-income folks. And that's one of the areas they're stressing, trying to get people, uh, livable housing and, and that sort of thing. Head Start program is getting underway with, uh, either half in person and, uh, half virtual. And, um, wearing masks or not mask on little kids is very difficult. And while the statistics say, you know, kids that are five really don't need to have masks and kids two years and that age and stuff can't even, can't even stand still long enough to have a mask on in the first place. So, uh, they're doing the best they can. All the teachers and people that work with them wear masks. So, uh, Head Start's getting started too. And that's about all I have, um, for our reporting.
All right, thank you. Uh, I attended Elizabeth Layton Center's, uh, Finance Committee last evening. And like I imagine, probably all our, uh, community partners, um, with everything going on, uh, this is affecting the amount of service they are able to provide or, or at least, uh, called on to provide, which affects revenues, which, uh, just really makes this not a normal year. So, um, but luckily, uh, because of some of the government programs and, um, uh, some billing software and internal, internal things they were able to do to help their accounts receivable, they're not in a position where they have to immediately do, uh, do big, uh, changes that, uh, may, uh, affect their ability to provide services tomorrow. Um, so I think like a lot of folks kind of in a, maybe a little bit of a wait and see to see what normal turns back into or when we can get back to normal. And, uh, probably couldn't run just like this inevitably, but, uh, they're not, not having to do any drastic changes right now, so that's good. And, um, still providing a lot of good services throughout this, just not quite as many as before. So, no, the demand isn't there, at least. So, um, not to say the need isn't, but, uh, that's the only update I have. Anybody else, before we look to adjourn, have anything to say? All right, looks like we've come to the end of our meeting then. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
It's Don, I'll make that motion.
All right, is there a second?
Um, second, Commissioner Dunn.
All right, thank you, Roy. All in favor of adjuring, say aye.
Aye.
All right then. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.